First item on the discussion is GOWELL demonstration. And I'm gonna let Mr. Greer introduce our guest tonight.
Tonight, we have a demonstration for GOVWell. Liam is on a Zoom call. They're they are the company that we are looking to switch to and get out of IDT and move towards their product. We had discussed this back in December. It had been asked by a couple of the commissioners to have a demonstration of how the program works prior to signing a contract. Tonight, we have the contract on the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and we have a demonstration prior to that for y'all to be able to observe and ask questions. The demonstration should take about 15 minutes, and then we'll have questions at the end to go back and forth with Liam.
And I said GOWELL, but it's GOVWell, sorry.
Awesome. Yeah, no worries at all. Thank you all for taking some time. Thank you all for letting me present. Not quite sure who I'm talking to, but that's okay. My name's Liam. Like Ethan said, I'm on the sales team here at GOVWell. I'm looking forward to I know we're on a slight time crunch. Typically, demos are a little bit longer than 15 minutes. But Ethan, it's been great throughout this whole process, and most recently, he's been great in just kind of letting me know what to focus on and what you all are gonna wanna see. So GOVWell, I just for a quick, brief overview of us, like mainly as a company, we only work with smaller municipalities. That that makes us the most obvious fit for Fairview. The reason for that is the configurability. Like, as you can see, Fairview wouldn't be our largest customer, wouldn't be our smallest either. And the whole goal here, I'm sure you all have seen stuff like this from other software companies, but the goal here is just to simplify the processes, make sure the building and planning departments can collaborate, and everyone be on the same page, as well as do their inspections out in the field. I know something Ethan's really excited about is this integrated plan review, where he's gonna be able to mark up plans, and everyone in the department, engineering and and building, are gonna be able to mark up plans and get automated notifications and corrections reports sent out to applicants without have to do anything other than their job, which is mark these up. And then I think something else that we take a lot of pride in is just our level of support. We're a smaller company. We're a startup. We take a, you know, we're zeroing in on the smaller to medium-sized communities, something that a lot of these companies don't necessarily do, more focused on the Chicagos and the Nashvilles and the, you know, New York Cities of the world. We have a very hands-on approach to our support, and that goes not only for your staff, but for your community as well. And I'll explain what I mean by that here in a second. And then what we're gonna start with here hopping into the demo is this online portal, which is gonna give these citizens the ability to apply for everything online, see what it is they need, get in staff information if they need to, and then a chat feature that actually allows them to chat with us rather than you saving your staff loads of time. So I'm gonna go ahead and start with that online portal side of things. And for the sake of the demo, we have Gotham City here so that we're not inundating one of our customers with tons of different applications we're not backed on. But just for example's sake, this is what a customer portal looks like. This is Hutto, Texas. As you can see, they have a picture of their town, a few different modules here, so applying for building permits, registering contractor licenses, and then paying for planning and zoning applications. Those are the different modules they're on, and they have their staff information here. So like I said, for demo purposes, this is Gotham City. We have a few different modules here as well. I believe Fairview is gonna have a few of these too, building permits, planning and zoning applications, and I wanna say code enforcement as well. And then, of course, staff information down here. So I'm just gonna go ahead and submit a quick building permit application to show you what it looks like as an applicant. And everything that you're seeing from here on is completely manipulable to what Fairview's process would be. So these application types, if Fairview had one building permit application, then that's what would be here. If Fairview had 100 different building permit applications, then that's what would be here. And then when you click into one, you're gonna see all the required documents, all the inspections required, and all the fees associated with it as well. Again, all of this matching, you know, what it would be in Fairview. If, you know, I'm not the most tech savvy person, or maybe you have questions about the process required documents, I can reach out through this chat feature. They're offline right this second, but during business hours, they will get back to you within two minutes. It is a member of our staff, and typically, they're able to answer questions based on your guys' process at that point. If not, we're never gonna take a shot in the dark. You know, it's gonna get sent back to the staff to answer those questions. But I think this is the most underrated part of GOVWell personally, just because I don't think people truly realize how much staff time it's saving and really freeing up your staff to to do their job, which is, you know, marking up plans and processing applications as opposed to spending 25 minutes on the phone, help out a contractor that's been in town for 40 years, change his IDT password. You know, that's that's shouldn't be what what people are dedicating their time to. So I'm gonna go ahead and start this residential new construction application, and it brings me right into the application. This application form is gonna look exactly how you all want it to. So Ethan's gonna get with our customer success managers, let them know what the form looks like, what type of different fields he wants on here, which ones he wants required, which ones he doesn't want required. And that's gonna affect whether people can apply for stuff, you know, send in their application. If if they're not filling out required fields, they're just not able to hit this next button to move on to the next page. So that's the leading the the problem of having incomplete applications sent through, and Ethan and co. having to chase them down for for updated information. So we'll go ahead and click next. Just make sure everything on this form is correct. Again, it sounds like I'm beating a dead horse, but it is important. Like, all of this is going to be completely matching Fairview's process. So this form would basically match an application form for Fairview. I'll go ahead and submit it. So that was the online portal side of things. That's how people are gonna submit applications. Same process for a code complaint, same process for plan applications. And they have the chat feature here to help them if they get stuck. Now, to switch it over to the staff side of things, this is what Fairview staff will see whenever they log in. On the left, you have all the different modules. You know, Fairview's gonna have building, planning, and zoning, among others. And then, you know, there's some other stuff down here, like tasks, reporting. We have some sophisticated reporting methods, and then settings. Anything we can change on our end, you guys can also change on your end. So that's something to keep in mind. And, you know, you have this chat feature, just like the community does. So if you need help changing a form, change a workflow, whatever the case may be, you can reach out to us. But that being said, once Ethan gets familiar with this, once other members of the staff get familiar with this, they're gonna easily be able to come to settings and do all that on their own as well. So I'll go ahead and hop back into building permits, and I'll refresh the page so we can see the one that I just submitted. And there we go. So we can see they're attached to different parcels on the map because I, because I just typed in 123 and attached it to an address when applying for the application. Looks like Coletta Circle in Richmond, Texas. I'll go ahead and click into the record. And right here is like the permit homepage. Basically, this is one record that we just applied for. You can see details, files, inspections, property information. Activity is everything that's going on on the permit, and then any contacts and fees associated. And these fees are automatically calculated, automatically uploaded based on the the inputs in the application. So this is all pretty self-explanatory, but I'm just gonna go through this workflow really quickly. We won't have time to get through all of it, but you'll get the idea. This initial review is just everyone looking over, seeing if the application has what it needs. Let's say it does, so we'll go ahead and mark it complete. Now, this workflow can be completely manipulated as well, just like everything in GOVWell to match your process exactly. Other some places collect fees at the end, some people, you know, don't conduct it initially. It really just depends on on what's going on at the municipality. But the most important thing to remember about this application and I or this workflow, and I think what like the bread and butter about GOVWell is, is that for basically every step of this, a notification is being sent back to the applicant. So we just marked our initial review complete. They not only got this submission, letting them know that it was turned in, but they they have this saying, hey, look, we assessed your submission for quality incompleteness. It is good to go. We're moving you on to the next step. And they can go in and track everything that they need to as well. Same thing for fees. We take a look at this. Everything looks good because it's automatically calculated based on your fee schedule. If not, we could remove them, or we could add different fees. This would be your fee schedule loaded up in here. But let's say everything looks good. Brush it. I'm gonna go ahead and send this invoice. And this invoice, like every other step of the workflow, the application moves to waiting. And the applicant is gonna get an email saying, hey, here's an attached invoice. And they'll have a PDF automatically generated. And can click in and pay via credit or debit card or bank account information in their GOVWell account. This link will take them right there. Or they can come in person if they're old school, and you can process everything with a card or just mark it paid by check or cash. We'll go ahead and do that. Then I know we're coming up on time here, so I will just show you plan review very quickly. You can root it to whoever you need to. Assign different reviewers. They'll get notified that they through email that they are reviewers. And let's be Jack White for a second. We'll go ahead and click into review, and it's gonna be Ethan's friend. He can come in, he can make any. Let's go ahead and measure some stuff. Like, I always tell people, I hope it's not glaringly obvious that I do not mark up plans for a living, but go ahead and make whatever measurements we need to. We can make any comments we need to. And we can reference codes. You know, if something's wrong, we can say here's why, here's a code for it. And then, once Ethan's done doing this, once everyone in the department's done doing this, you can approve the plans, choose whether you want them to acknowledge the comments. And that step, just like everything else, once everyone is done.
I would really love for you to show them the property piece.
Perfect. Yeah, so in what case scenario would we need to do that? Just if you get a complaint or something.
Code complaints or any open building permits?
Perfect.
Open fire, fire permits, different things that we have.
Awesome. Yeah, so you could search an address, whether it's in like building permits or just master, like throughout the whole software. Like, if you just wanna find an address in the whole software, I'll go ahead and type 123, and it'll come up, comes up 123 Caldwell Drive. And if I click in, property tab, and then here's a parcel number, here's an address. All I have to do is click one of them, and it's gonna open it up in a new tab. So this is obviously really helpful when you get code complaints. You wanna go to the property, see if it's the first time something's happened. But yeah, all you need to do is either search the address or find the record attached to the address, and you can click on it and see all the violations, all the different records at it. Yeah, whatever the case may be. Also, you can find it on a map. So if you know exactly where it is there, you can do that too. Like, let's say, you know, you have someone out in the field, and they're on, they know what street they're on, but they can't find the address, and they call in, and they say, hey, I'm on this street. Can you tell me which permits are active on this street? You could like zoom in on the map and find it, and then and then go from there. Be like, there's four active permits on this street. There's one at 123, there's one at 456, so yeah. That was 15 minutes, so I know you guys are kind of pressed for time. But yeah, I'm happy to show anything else that you want me to or or just answer questions. It's it's completely up to to you all, how you wanna spend spend this time.
Mayor, if I may, I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind. I'll just run through my list real quick, and then I'm sure there's a few others that have some questions as well. So first off, you said you were a startup. How how long have you guys, how long have you been around?
Since March 2023.
March 23. So is that safe to say that around that time is about your longest existing customer as well? Your client?
Correct, yes, I would say so, I would think so, yeah.
I guess from, it's not a huge amount of time to to build up a ton of data, but it does look like you have a handful of clients out there. Is there any issues around applicant adoption of this as far as, you know, you have developers of all ages, and they, you know, they do things, they've been doing things for a certain way for so long? Is there issues that come about with this new software of getting them to adopt the process and learning the the software as far as like training for the applicants that are gonna be using this just as much as staff would be using it?
Yeah, that that's a really good question. I think change is hard. You know, it doesn't matter like in what, you know, people are always gonna be resistant to change. And I'm sure you can imagine, like, building officials that have been doing, and applicants and contractors that have been doing the same stuff for 35 years, that 40 years, that that, you know, even more difficult for them. I would say, though, you know, we get that question a lot, but the world kind of move is moving in that direction, so that kind of bodes well for us. And from at least the customers I've talked to, the customers that I've signed on, people have been very pleasantly surprised with how much the community has picked on it. So there is always gonna be those guys that are a few years away from retirement, or they're just bad at tech. I'm pretty bad at technology for for someone my age, too, like. So I can imagine that there's always gonna be those people that wanna come in or, you know, are resistant to it. If that's the case, all Ethan has to do is come up here to create new, and it's the exact same process. But the short answer to your question is, I think a lot of people have been very, very, you know, once they see that they can just go on, and it takes two minutes to apply for something, and they're getting updated automatically as their permit's being processed, I think they're less resistant to it than, you know, they realize, hey, I don't have to drive in and then call them every time I need, I have a question about the status of my permit. I think they seem to be less resistant whenever they see how easy it is to use, I think.
Sure.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's.
Sorry if it was long-winded.
No, that's great. I agree with you. I mean, I do see the 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 pros of this, right? And you're right, that's the direction that everything's heading is more of a application-based process. And in regards to that, I know you said 2000, March 23, and you may not have this available right away. I don't know if something you could get us. Do you have data that shows like how much time this cuts down from the process of the traditional way of doing things? And then, once the municipalities and the applicants get used to this new way, is there any data that that can be shown on how much time-saving is had from both the process of the applications themselves being processed and the back and forth? If there's, you know, X amount less emails, more, you know, this much less time spent from the from staff spending on each individual piece of the process, that that sort of thing?
Yeah, no, to be honest, there's not an abundance of it. You know, we have just over 30, 30 customers, and and, you know, like, you know, like, we've been around for a little bit less than two years. But that being said, we we're we're with Hampton, Georgia, which I think I've spoken with Ethan. Ethan used to live around there or used to work there. And we actually did a, like, an annual recap with them whenever we hit our one-year anniversary. And I don't know if it was us or them that compiled the data, but I know that they they did have some stuff on that. So I I could ask to see if I could get access to that. I can't imagine they would, they're big fans of us. I can't imagine that they would have any problem with us using that. So let me double-check on that, and I can get that information to you if that's something you'd be interested in. But it was, it was along the lines of what you're talking about. Like, you know, it took them X amount of time, like, two weeks to process a permit on average, and now it takes, on average, like 20 minutes. Like, it was like, it was like that, so.
Yeah, no, I think that would be, I think it would be good data to have. Not only, I mean, at the end of the day, it's taxpayer money that we're spending on a new application, and it's just nice to be able to present, you know, the savings, whether that be time, money, whatever it might be. That data's always, you know, is always beneficial to have on hand. And then I guess my last question, and then I'll pass it off, is do you, and this can just be a rough answer. You don't necessarily have to have like exact data on it. But as far as adoption goes, from even the city staff perspective, once we onboard this application, start using it, how long is it before it starts running smoothly? You're not getting as many requests for assistance on how do you do this? How do you do that? How long are you guys engaged with city staff to make sure that that transition takes place? That that type of thing?
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's a, that's a great question, because I I've heard a big concern of people is like implementation in this industry when you're implementing a new software with all the historical data and everything, that can be an absolute nightmare at times. We have, like, we take implementation very seriously. We, there's gonna be a customer success manager assigned to Fairview's account, and they are there for implementation. That process is like, they'll probably meet like one or two hours a week to put everything together and whatnot. And then, once everything is at go-live, like, hopefully, implementation's broken up into stages. One of them is like a user testing. Like, there's discovery where we figure out how everything's gonna be set up. We set it up. And then there's user testing, which is like before, technically before go-live, but we give you the software to kind of like work it out, like the king's, see, you know, if there's something that you wanted differently, and then get back to us, give us feedback, and then we fix it before the official go-live. We don't go anywhere after that. So that customer success manager is basically an implementation manager, but then, after that, they're not going anywhere. Like, Ethan's gonna have their phone, their email, and also the chat feature still online at all times for like quick fixes. But we save you throughout the whole process. So I would say buy-go-live. The software's gonna, on day one, the goal is that on day one, the the software looks exactly how how you guys would want it to, and is running like that.
Liam, this is Mayor Anderson. After reviewing your product, it's a lot less expensive. I've never felt like IDT was the best product for Fairview. It's not easy to use. I feel like your product is very user-friendly. And I feel like communication is so important. So I feel like anyone who goes into that, the applicant, I like the process that you have where the applicant gets, you know, information back quickly so that they know their next step. So I just feel like it's a lot more user-friendly. It's a lot less expensive. I've never, I don't like IDT. It's just not, it's not user-friendly. So typically, I will reach out to Ethan. I I will not get on IDT. When I reviewed your product, it made me very happy because I feel like this is a product that I'm comfortable with, that I could get on and and won't have to, you know, reach out to Ethan all the time. So I I do have a question about the support. Is that AI or a a real person?
That's a real person. Yeah, it's one of our customer. We have, we have people dedicated to to just that support function.
Well, I I like that, too, because I get frustrated sometimes when it's a bot or AI where you're asking a question, and it it gets confused as to what you're asking. So I'm excited that it's a live person. So I think, I mean, I'm just one person, but I'm excited. I hope that the board can, you know, get more familiar with your product. I think it's, you know, gonna save taxpayer dollars, but also be less frustrating for the applicants and the board to be able to navigate. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Liam, thank you so much for this demo. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Mm-hmm. So to piggyback on what Vice Mayor McDonald was asking before, I wanna go a little bit earlier in time and ask about, and this is maybe a question for Ethan also. I'm not really sure how this works. But with our current historical data, is that going to be moved over into this system so that all of the current permits will move over? And and like, is that a process where like, maybe, I don't know if IDT has? Well, let me stop there. Is that, is that going to happen? Is there going to be a data transfer?
Yes, there will be data transferred to where it moves over all of the historical data. We began using IDT in 2019. So we have right at five years of data to transfer over. And then that will all be available within the GOVWell system moving forward.
Thank you. And then, assuming someday we decide to go with another company again, then all of that historical data from the point that we've moved over this would go over to the next company also, assuming everything's got like open APIs, and it's, it can move in, correct? No problem?
I didn't, I didn't hear that last part, but the the data is is yours, if that, if that was the question.
And it's just easy enough to transfer out.
We've had enough people switch over to us, and and the company that they've, some, not gonna say names, but the companies they switch from sometimes don't play super nicely when it comes to giving them the data so that they can switch over and migrate all of it. And we just, I don't know, it's just kind of bush league. So, yeah, if you do choose to go another direction one day, then, yeah, the data is yours. It's always yours.
Thank you.
All right. Liam, thank you for joining us for tonight for this demonstration. That will conclude our 6:00 to 6:30 GOVWell demonstration work session. Mayor, you can begin the next item.
All righty.
Yeah, thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. And, yeah, we're all, we're all looking forward to to working with you, so.
Liam, thank you for your presentation and for speaking with us tonight during this work session.
Absolutely. If you have any other questions, please have Ethan reach out and just let me know. I'm happy to do this again, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, bye.
Okay, so item number two is staff reports. Is that you, Mr. Darty?
I'm hoping it'll be board-driven, but there've been a few things that have been said that have kind of, I guess, excited is not the correct word, but are interested in, there's been bounced around quarterly reports. I think, I think staff thinks that they could get more information into it instead of feeling like they're repetitive, same things every month. Maybe look at something of emailing and then asking questions. Maybe be a little more efficient time in the meetings. But we're we're open to whatever format, whatever items the board wants to, wants to be reported on. And I'll just let y'all kind of go from there.
Well, thank you so much. I think I introduced this idea, so I'll I'll just take the first leap and thank everybody who is here to talk about this. We did go over some of the things that we thought would be helpful to have in these reports during one of our previous meetings. And I know Ethan was taking notes about that before. But I'm hoping, what I'd like to see, I don't know about the rest of the board, I'm hoping that we can have something like a template so that we can make sure that we are receiving the type of information on a regular basis, that's uniform across the board, and we're getting information that we need every time. And and that we are hearing from every department, at least, at least quarterly is pretty important to me. But I think the template is probably the biggest recommendation I would make so that we've got some normalcy across the board and then over time.
A quick question for you, Commissioner. We discussed this staff and sand fire chiefs here tonight. We discussed internally, as We discussed internally is looking at at templates and those different formats. The report that you would receive from the Planning and Codes Office is drastically different than what you would receive from PD. Also drastically different than what you would receive from Fire. And so looking at kind of a uniform template. It would almost be more of a departmental template. Is that something that you would want? The department to come up with a template? To provide that report? You gave at least uh, quarterly. And then. You know, have a emailed kind of summary report for a monthly summary. Over to y'all monthly, is that what you're kinda getting at?
Um, yes, and I think depending on a high level. On how high level you go with your categories, it could be across the board the same and then how that. Information is delivered would look very different from department to department. So say for instance, high level. You might just say like, maybe there's a funding needs level, right, so does anybody, do you need something, is there something that you, that's coming along? Down the pike or something that you can know of, what what kind of noteworthy things have happened in the past? Interim since the last report, so is there something you wanna give a shout out about your staff, or is there something that? Um, happened that was noteworthy, like a big event that your your department hosted? Um. That that's the kind of uniformity I'm kind of looking for, so we're always getting something maybe financial, maybe about the. Kudos, maybe something about needs. Um. And if there's nothing to add, then I think that's fine, but noting that there's nothing in that category would be helpful. And and maybe the rest of the board doesn't agree with me. But I think it would be nice to have that information to. Communicate with us. All so that we all have the same information and with the folks who are listening and um. And just helping with us have a good historical record as well. And then obviously department to department, that would look different, and so there could be some things in there, and and another thing I haven't said yet, but. Could be a possibility is, you know, the presentations we get now are very good and very organized, I'm not saying to throw it all out, but perhaps use what's. Being reported on now is a good start to base the template. Uh, because we are getting good data, so so what are the numbers, what's the important data points? Um, and so that could be your high level, what are the important data points, and then within that, it'll look different from department to department. Because they're providing different information. I hope that helps explain what I had in mind a little bit better.
That helps me with kind of what you were looking for as far as. Higher level items, not necessarily just. What are we doing day to day, but also. You know. City business-wise, it seemed like what you were looking for from. Our department's needs. Department needs. Jump up here.
I think if we, I I think staff would be more than willing to provide, I think if um. If if the board could provide um. Maybe some. A basis or a skeleton of 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 maybe uh. What y'all wanna hear as as far as those um. Items, I think we could work with that and maybe fill in the blanks, but I I don't wanna. I I just, I think. More clarity on. Exactly what y'all want is probably what what we would feel more comfortable, com- comfortable trying to fulfill.
Well, again, since I'm the catalyst for this, I'm more than happy to spend some time drafting up a couple of different. Options and what I think and sending them to you to share with the rest of the board and with the staff and obviously the department heads would be. Really important um, to help determine what works and what doesn't, if it doesn't make any sense what I put forth, then I wouldn't expect anybody to. Vote for that, but maybe just a jumping off point. Um, and then everyone can have input on it. Okay. Yeah. Seeing a lot of nodding heads, so that sounds like a good direction. Okay. Thank you.
Add to that, I think, I think um. I think that's good, for me, I think the bigger thing is takeaways, right, like what did, what is it? A lot of that stuff, like you said, monthly can be sent in an email. And it's pretty easily digestible, um, but from a department, like what's your needs, is there anything that? You want us to be aware of besides just the? The the day-to-day type numbers, um. And then all departments, I think like for our um. Um, Public Works, you know, that's that's a big one, I know those guys do a ton. And we don't really ever. I mean, we hear about it when it's needed to be heard about, but I think the citizens would like to hear that, that hey, we've done. You know, whatever it is that they feel is necessary to bring forward. And it would give us an opportunity to have a discussion with them, hear what needs they have, um, cuz I'm sure they have some. Um. And then it doesn't make it feel like they're. You know, have to get and put. Put themselves on the agenda or step out of their comfort zone and say, okay, we're gonna go in front of the BOC this month and we're gonna ask for this, I think if you have a set expectation that every quarter. All the departments are gonna have some sort of report given, it gives them that opportunity to have that dialogue without it feeling. One way or the other, if that makes sense. Um. I don't, I I don't see what negatives come from that personally, I could be wrong, um. But it would, I I just think that would be, that would be beneficial. As far as what the reports look like, I think the best people to come up with those are the department heads. Um, the chiefs and the heads of each individual department knows what's important to them and what what the BOC. Needs to know as far as what's going, the ongoings in their department, what's coming up, what's uh. You know, what has happened, what's about to happen, the issues that they're currently faced with, um. You know, anything of note would give them the opportunity to have that discussion. To your point, Commissioner Roberts, I think. Um. Sometimes we get. We're so involved in our own daily life and you have a very fresh perspective on the board. And so I would appreciate if you were to. Work and provide some form of, at least some bullet point items that you would like more information on out of our reports, so that we have that. To be able to begin drafting a. A report that would meet the expectations that you're looking for and so include the items that we have. Sometimes we get kinda. Narrow focused into our particular. Departments and so I think a fresh perspective could be beneficial.
I appreciate that and I do appreciate the the sort of non-verbal cues I'm getting from the department heads, um, so thank you all for. Jumping into this with me and I will do some work and provide a little bit more detail and and some thoughts, and again, this does go out to. You, Mr. Darty, and then the the department heads and and the rest of the staff and then the BOC to vet it, but. Um, it probably is best for me to just put it down in paper, but truly appreciate everyone's willingness to walk down this road with me, thank you.
Just to make sure I'm clear on everything for the agenda. You all agree with quarterly reports? From each department, if we had, let's say we had eight departments, we would have four on the first meeting of April. And then four on the second meeting in April. With January, February, and March, and then they would report on it in April. And then so on for the year, is that what we wanna do?
We took a vote on that before and I'm, I feel like that's what we. That, yes, does anyone disagree with that?
And we will still have city manager report on every meeting.
Yes, please. Yes, we just voted on whether we were going to do this and on what frequency and who we were asking before, so. I just wanted to make sure everyone remembered the vote the way that I did.
Uh, Mayor. Uh, the way I would like to see it, um, I don't know how the discussion has went, and I'm sorry for being here late, but it's a. A medical problem in my family, but anyway. Uh. Police doesn't have to be here the same night that the fire department's here. Y'all can switch it up, I believe that y'all can switch it up yourself and come. And decide who comes and when. Uh, I don't, I don't think we need to pinpoint it to when y'all need to be here. That would be fine with me, whatever would be the easiest for y'all, cuz. Back when I asked for this, I didn't. Want to put a an extra burden on y'all, but uh, I think the citizens at the time really enjoyed. And with the way that everything went at the last meeting that everybody got into the act, I thought it was an excellent. Forum at night and it was, uh, that's the night I asked for us to stand up and applaud, that was for all of y'all, not just one department, that was for everybody that laid their reports. I agree with you. And I do appreciate it, I really do, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We will um. Adjourn our. Work session and reconvene at seven PM for our Board of Commissioners meeting, thank you.